All right, welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, our monthly elected officials meeting, Wednesday, January 20th, 2021. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. We have Commissioner Carolina Mejia and Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards, County Manager Ramiro Chavez, and different elected officials and representatives popping in. We have our county assessor Stephen Drew, our county coroner Gary Warnock. We have, looks like prosecuting attorney John Toonheim popping in, undersheriff Ray Brady from the Thurston County Sheriff's Office. Another phone in, not sure who's at 2140, but.
Could you please identify yourself, the phone number ending with 2140? Again, could you please identify yourself with the phone number ending on 2140? If I don't hear any confirmation, I may probably have to release you from the Zoom meeting.
Hey Romero, that's my office line.
Oh, that's your office line?
Yeah, I don't know why it's got me showing up twice.
You are covering both bases.
Yeah, I don't know why.
All right, thank you.
Okay, great. So it's the open forum. We do not have a set agenda. Appreciate everybody being here. It's great to check in with our fellow elected officials. And we just go around the horn. I know Commissioner Hutchings used to ask a question. Here's Auditor Mary Hall, just to ask folks to answer a question. So I'll continue that tradition and just ask folks to say, what is the first trip they're going to take when they feel comfortable to take trips that maybe they don't feel comfortable now with the pandemic? When they start to feel comfortable with travel, hopefully that'll be later this year. What's on your agenda for somewhere you're planning to go? Let's start with our assessor, Stephen Drew.
I have so many plans, but I'm going to assume, I'm going to embed in your question that my first trip is going to be a conservative one. Because I'll be comfortable enough to take the conservative trip, but not waiting until I'm perfectly comfortable to take the best trip. I would, of course, love to go back to Europe or South America, Central America, but probably Canada by car or boat.
Once they let us back in?
Yes, once they let us back in. And if I may, if I may just say, welcome Commissioner Mejia to the council. It's good to see you there.
Thank you.
Steve, what do you have to report to, on your, what's going on in your group?
Well, we have some vacancies to fill and we're in that process. We continue to have some challenges in the field due to the level of stress predominantly in rural Thurston County, or in rural settings in urban Thurston County. And that stress stems from the fact that we visit without an appointment, as we're directed to do by statute. That stress stems from all of the political rancor. That stress stems from the limitations to help us, you know, get through the COVID crisis. People perhaps being without work or with less pay and the kids are screaming in the other room, all of that stress and we come to the door and we receive it. And it's a, it's a big challenge for us now. And with pictometry not fully online, we have to keep plugging along. We don't have relief from Department of Revenue or the governor. I mean, we're essential, but our presence is notably less welcomed than in the past. And everything we've tried still leads to threats from members of the public. So it's a big challenge. That's what we're facing.
Question for your assessor? No, okay. Let's hear from our coroner Gary Warnock. Where would you like to travel when the pandemics recedes? And what's going on in your group?
First off, I want to echo what Stephen said about having Commissioner Mejia join our board. I look forward to working with you in the future and best of luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, very welcome.
Yes, thank you very much.
As far as where I would like to go, I want to go to the sun and that's probably Hawaii. Been there many times, have enjoyed it. So I'd like to go back. Hopefully I don't get stuck there in the quarantine, but would still like to go there. As far as the group, we're holding our own. We've had no outbreaks as far as the COVID with my staff. So knock on wood, everyone wears a mask here. If I'm in my office, I don't, but if I walk out there, I do. And that goes the same with everybody else. But other than that, it's been, it's been steady here, but we're still pushing through.
Have there been any, like, I know early, early on, you had like a sort of a suicides were ahead of pace. And then you, I think last month you reported that that had kind of backed off. Is that anything sort of notable in that way statistically?
No, no. I know, like last year, we were averaging right from day one, we averaged roughly six suicides a month going through the whole year and then, and I want to say August, it started to tail down. And I think August, we had two, and then September, October, November, December, we each had one for each of those months. So beginning of the year, we were on track to do 80 suicides. And I think we ended the year with just over, I want to say it was right around 55. So that was a drastic decrease in the numbers that we were seeing. And to start off the year, we're not seeing that right now. So hopefully that continues, that we don't see those numbers.
The 55, Gary, how that relates to 2019? Do you know?
2019, I, I want to say we had 50 or 60. I'd have to check on that Romero.
Okay. Any other questions for coroner? Hearing none, let's go to undersheriff Brady.
Thank you guys for allowing me to be here on behalf of the sheriff. He sends his apologies for not being able to be here today. But, but again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I have to echo with Gary, I've had two Hawaii trips canceled due to the pandemic. So I am looking forward to the day when I will get to spend all of my airfare credit and hopefully go to Hawaii. So from the sheriff's office standpoint, we are dealing with, with some COVID issues, both here on our law enforcement side as well as in the jail. Our staff has, in my opinion, done very well in working closely with, with Shelley's team over at the Health Department and Dr. Abu Malik. It's, it's gone very smoothly as far as testing and things go. But certainly, you know, raises, you know, a lot of concern amongst employees. So we're working closely with the Health Department on testing and, and getting, you know, staff taken care of. We also are dealing with a lot of, a lot of hiring over here, both in, in, in filling vacated positions from retirements and such, but also again, thanks to the commission, we're, we are also filling some new positions as well. So our background unit is, is very, very busy. And, you know, those, those backgrounds take months and months and months to complete. They're pretty thorough. So it takes us probably about a year to actually get folks on, on the road and ready to go. So, but we're getting through it. And again, just appreciate the opportunity to be here today.
Is Sheriff Snazza feeling okay? And I read in the paper about him and said he was doing good then, but that was several days ago.
He is, yeah. So I've, I've been in contact with him the whole time. He's, he's resting, but, but not having any, any, he's pretty asymptomatic. And so he's just, just taking some time away from work and, and recovering, so.
Questions for undersheriff?
Yes, I have a quick question.
Go for it.
Ray, how did things turn out, I don't know, nationally over at our state Capitol or anything? Were there anything, anything out of the ordinary?
Yeah, we haven't seen or heard really much of anything going on. I know Chief Dehan and I have made a couple rounds around the campus here today several times. And no, no protesters, anybody out front here at the courthouse. So yeah, we haven't, haven't really seen much locally or nationally that's really going on in that regard. So, you know, in some respects, it'll, it will be nice to, to kind of move past some of that. And, you know, the all of the different protests and stuff have been extremely taxing on, on our office and, and, you know, several surrounding communities as well. So it will be nice hopefully to move forward from that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Undersheriff, first congratulations. I haven't seen you since your appointment.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations to you. And I share your wish to see the level of stress in the community dissipate sooner rather than later. And I'm very relieved that we didn't have, you know, any event at the Capitol that would have led to a bunch of arraignments across the courtyard from all of us. So that's good to know.
Mary?
Yeah, also congratulations, Ray, on your new appointment. Look forward to working with you as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm, I'm excited.
Yeah, undersheriff Brady, I also want to say congratulations to you. Welcome to the executive branch. We're thrilled to have you. And I also want to thank the sheriff's department for responding to the suspicious package that was left in the courtyard at, you know, on, by Amazon over the weekend. And I appreciate your bomb squad taking a look at it and ensuring that there was nothing in there. Especially because it was addressed to me. So thank you very much. I'm glad it was nothing, but I really, really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to Mary Hall, who's next on my screen.
So congratulations, Commissioner Mejia. I'm so excited to have you on the, on the board. I think it's going to be a great year and a great makeup. And congratulations Commissioner Mensah for, for becoming chair. I'm excited for you to be on our canvassing board. So where am I going to go? You know, I've got all these Alaska airline credits, of course, because all of our plans were canceled. But I think I'm going to go to Guadalajara because it's something that's been on my bucket list since I was 21. And the reason it was on my bucket list, because it was such a shopping mecca, not that I really need shoes right now or anything else, but, but I think it'll be an interesting place to go. And then my dream trip is I really want to head to Europe, Mediterranean. So those two things are what I want to do next. As far as my office, we're really busy. Of course, it's, you know, year end for financial services and they had an incredibly busy fourth quarter tying up all the grants, the CRF and all of the election grants. We had over a million dollars in grants in elections, which is a good thing because that's how much we overspent for this election. It was incredibly expensive, but incredibly successful. My licensing and recording department was amazingly incredibly busy and just blew out their revenue budget. So between the additional revenue that we hadn't budgeted for and what we are going to revert back to the general fund is almost a million dollars. So I'm really proud of that. We tried to save general fund dollars if we could spend our grant monies and it was an allowable cost. We did that this last year. So I'm really proud of that. Elections is really busy. People think, okay, elections is over, but this is when we do all of our voter maintenance. So right now what we're doing is all of the address changes, cleaning up our voter registration database, which most people think, I mean, there are some people that think we don't do that at all, but our database is incredibly clean and any of the allegations that were presented, we could not confirm any of them. So we are doing our normal maintenance on our voter registration database to make sure it's as clean as it can be. And I think we've got one of the cleanest in the state.
How do you determine that, Mary? How do you know, like, how do you assess how clean your database is? Did you hear?
So when the Culp campaign came out and provided a list of all of the deceased voters that they say had, said had voted, there were none. In fact, one of the people on that list actually worked for us as an extra help person in the November general election. They also presented us with thousands of records of people that had moved out of state and weren't eligible, eligible to vote here. And that was false as well. And when we get the reports from the Secretary of State's office, which, you know, the public doesn't see, but we see.
You're, you're cutting off, Mary.
They send out, you know, okay, how many this county has and this county has and this county has obese. And it's because we are richer and Lynette Milton, an amazing supervisor and staffer, totally committed to ensuring that we have really solid voter records. So it's, it's an amazing team effort and every single one of my election staff are truly committed to ensuring that we work those lists and we scour them thoroughly.
I really appreciate this. I mean, if you think about, if you think about what we just went through from November, from election day to today, with basically zero voter fraud, I just shudder to think if there was a little bit of voter fraud, you know, it, you know, what, what would have happened and what we'd be going through and where our, even our democratic system would be. So just thank you and everybody that does your work that, that made this election so clean and above reproach to where any court in the land, you know, Republican, Democrat, whatever, it was just easy to say, no, there's nothing there. That's not, you know, I just, it was very important. It was never been more important. And you've been saying this for the last two years, but what, what you said was true, it was never more important to make this election just clean and crisp and, you know, be above reproach. Well, you know, well monitored and, and just accurate so that there could just be no, no way to, to attack it. Because if there had been any way, it would have been exploited in courts across the country. We can, you know that.
And it was not only in the state, but across the country. I am so proud of my colleagues across the country. This is the most secure election, the cleanest election, the most error-free election I have ever experienced in my career. And this is my sixth presidential election. So it was, it was truly amazing. And it's a shame that it's, you know, there's all of this fake news about the validity of this election.
Fake news that is reverberating through the halls of our Congress. That's what's just makes me ill. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I just amplify gratitude for the fine work you did. Not, not only the first priority, which is administering an absolutely fair and accurate election, but the important second task, which was communicating it, articulating it well. And I'm grateful for all of the media that you utilized to do that. I, I will tell you, I'm a little envious when I hear you talk about a million dollars in grants. And you told me a story at one point about, about hearing about how Amazon was giving away money and in a five-minute phone call, you got what, $17,000 or something from them?
No, another $85,000.
Oh, $85,000. You know, like, there's never been a grant for assessors. We don't even have a copy machine good enough to print money. So I'm envious, you know.
Yeah, we were fortunate. And to add to that, so one of the questions on our final report to them was, what would you do if your election budget was doubled? Oh my gosh, I had a list a mile long and it was totally out, you know, outside of the box. So I'm just really fascinated and curious of why they asked that question.
They wanted you to say, help out all of general government. You probably missed that.
Any questions or comments additional for Mary?
No, I just, again, thank you, Mary. And huge props to, to your staff. Guys did such a wonderful job just throughout the whole election process. So thank you for that.
Ditto.
Yeah, Commissioner Mejia's time was wasted on the campaign trail with fake news and legal fees that were completely unnecessary. And Mary handled all of that definitely. So I appreciate that. Let's go to prosecuting attorney John Toonheim.
Hello, everyone. It's nice to see you all and connect again this month. And Commissioner Mejia, I'm going to add my welcome as well. It's nice to have you join the commission. Looking forward to working with you. I'm sure you've already met Elizabeth. And as your lawyer, I'm, will say, feel free to call us anytime. We're here to help in any way that we can. So where am I going? Well, be honest with you, I'm, I'm not really waiting for the end of the pandemic. I'm already starting to think about the next motorcycle trip. You all know that last summer I put 5,000 miles on my motorcycle. It was the, it was the trip of, of a lifetime. And my cousin who also rides, who rode with me for part of this trip, we're already talking about our next trip. And so we'll, we'll be thinking about that. So that's in the cards already. And then my wife and I have vowed to do an Alaska cruise once pandemic is over and the ships open up, because it's something that's been on our list for a while. We kept putting it off and putting it off. And now it's like, we're not going to put it off anymore. Once this opens up. And then my third trip that's in my, on my bucket list is Norway, which is where my heritage is. And getting back to the original, there's a village, fortified village in Norway. It's no longer exists, but that's where the name Toonheim comes from. And there's a farm there that's been in our family for generations. And I have, you know, second and third cousins still in, in Norway. So that's the, that's going to be the, the, the bucket list trip. As for our office, you know, everything is still busy, but pretty much the same. Our biggest challenge continues to be the inability to move cases because of the shutdown of the courts. The court moved its starting, start date for trials again to March 1st, for good reason. We, we kind of anticipated that and we knew that the holiday bubble was coming. And so I'm, I was actually somewhat relieved that they made that decision so that I wouldn't have to put my lawyers in a courtroom with a, a lot of other folks acting as jurors and all of that. But the cases are piling up. We've still got cases coming in, not as many cases going out. And so the caseloads are climbing, which is actually okay right now because, you know, things are kind of stagnant. But once we open up, it's going to get really crazy because we're going to be starting to try to move cases again. And that's when it's going to get really taxing for us. So we're talking about strategies to prepare for that and be ready for that internally. Let me see if there's anything else I wanted to mention. I think that's, you know, that's really it for, it's just kind of business as usual under unusual circumstances.
Questions for prosecutor?
I just have a raw numbers question. John, you know, many months ago, you said that we were seeing fewer civil cases as people just weren't quite as hungry to sue each other. I know that hasn't offset the stacking up of cases to, you know, feed through the, the legal system. But, you know, what are the numbers of what's compared to historic highs? I mean, how, how huge is your challenge?
So I, I couldn't really tell you anything about the civil side of the House. Commissioner Mejia may actually know more about that, given the job that she transitioned from. And, and she might have more in-depth knowledge on the civil side. But on the criminal side right now, I've got about, I think the last time I looked, I was at about 1,200 referrals that were basically sitting for review, that were trying to take some preliminary action on. We've been working to try to divert as many of those as we can right off the bat. Depending on when the court starts to open up and when we can start moving cases that are the, the referrals that we get in where law enforcement hasn't made an arrest, they haven't booked anybody, those are the cases that continue to move. So if somebody actually gets arrested and booked, those are the cases we can actually get into the court system and that we can move along. So the, the other cases I'm talking about are the ones where a person wasn't arrested or booked because the, they don't meet the booking threshold under the jails COVID policy. So depending on when that happens, I'm going to estimate that we're going to have somewhere between probably 1,500 and 2,000 referrals to try to move through, to resolve one way or another. Some of those frankly might be we might just take some of those referrals. And if there hasn't been any, you know, if we've had a referral on somebody for a number of months and then there's been no other activity, no new arrests, no anything like that, offer them a very simple diversion of what I would basically just call a stay out of trouble diversion. And, and walk away from some of those cases just because of the, the amount of work that's there. That's a possibility. That's one of the things we're talking about internally. And then others trying to get routed into, you know, another diversion program, pre-trial services diversion or program we call Friendship, which is a nonprofit that does diversion services for us, things like that. So that's the, that's the scope of what we're dealing with. And the misdemeanors, interestingly enough, are So that's the, that's the scope of what we're dealing with. And the misdemeanors, interestingly enough, are a little bit lower than the felonies because those cases get direct filed by law enforcement into court. And so they're moving through district court. And so I actually think our misdemeanor backlog will be smaller than our felony backlog, which is somewhat unusual for us. Yeah. And fortunately juvenile, the juvenile cases and referrals are still way down. We've got, I think, one of the best juvenile systems in the country, frankly, in the state of Washington. And Thurston County is right up among them in the state because we only, you know, we only have a very few young people in the detention facility at any given time. We're diverting a lot of those cases. We have been for a while. So that really, the juvenile system really is still operating at a manageable level, I think, is what, the way I would say it.
Great. Thank you, John. So Judge Ammilo is, her name is there, and I hope that she's there. Love to welcome her. All right. Welcome, Judge. I don't know if you caught my, my initial comment, but it was to tell us where you want to travel when the pandemic makes you feel safe to do so. Where's the first place on your list? And then let us know kind of how things are going for you as a new judge, and anything about the courts you want to relay. Love to hear it.
Hey, first of all, I want to go to San Diego. I know it's not very far, but I love San Diego. And it's a quick way to go, get to the sun without crossing the country. If I had my druthers to cross the country, I'd go to Destin, Florida, because it is so beautiful down there on the Gulf of Mexico and still be in the United States and not really, seems like you're in the French Riviera, Riviera, but not quite. So those are my two sunny spots. It's going very well. I have a host of fantastic mentors, not only the staff, but the clerk's office and the judges. Everybody's just been super helpful. Even your guys, John, they've been super helpful in terms of making sure that I'm, that I'm properly oriented. I think one of the things that, you know, you don't realize as a practitioner, how different it is depending on your view. And so I'm not in there just worrying about my case. I'm in there making sure that everybody's case is getting the proper attention, that it does. I've had my second, this is my second day on the bench, actually being on the bench. And so that was quite an experience, just learning how all the parts are moving together. I'm very, very honored to be here. I just think that I've told a number of people, it's like coming back home because I, you know, always, I've had a really good career here in Thurston County as a public defender. And then being gone for a year and to come back into an environment where it's welcoming and warm and supportive. And I feel that everything's oriented towards my success, being successful in this role. And so I'm just glad to be back here in the team. So thank you very much to all of you.
Welcome and congratulations. Yes, Steve?
Thank you.
Your Honor, I think I typed the word wut a few times on Facebook, but I just wanted to congratulate you and welcome you. And, you know, the first step toward diversity is the largest. And I'm grateful for your willingness to step forward in your success in doing so.
Mary?
Welcome to the bench, Your Honor.
So, Your Honor, we've known each other since 2012. For those of you who don't know, she was actually a political observer when I was supervisor of election in Pierce County. So that was our, our first encounter. And I'm just so proud of you. And I think you are going to do an amazing job. I think you're the perfect addition to our bench. And I'm really, really excited for you and Thurston County. So congratulations.
All right. Anybody else?
I just want to say congratulations to Judge Ammilo as well. I'm very excited that she's on the bench and excited to see all the things you accomplish.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I'm glad to be joining at around the same time that you are because it's just a time for not only some of the things that John and Ray talked about in terms of the community getting past some of the discomfort that we've all been living through. But it is also still a time of change. And I just appreciate being part of it, being part of a team of people. And even Commissioner coming out of, a new Commissioner coming out of another department and into her role instead of someone coming completely from the outside. I think it's just a really good opportunity for us all to go forward and try to do better, be better, do better, and in service to the community that we're here for. So that's all I have.
Mira, did you?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
You're good. Okay. Well, Judge Price has joined us, and you're next, Judge. We're asking people to say where they'd like to travel once this pandemic recedes enough to make them feel comfortable to do so as a kind of initial prelude to whatever other comments you'd like to make.
Well, first of all, let me apologize for being late. I had another meeting that ran long. And of course, I walk right into the meeting just as our, our new Judge Ammilo is saying hello. And I just want to echo what everyone else has said, which is how excited we are to have her join us. She's, she's gotten up to speed, getting up to speed. And it's been a lot of fun working with her so far. And I look forward to, I look forward to continuing to work with her and both helping her understand the job and also learning from her, some of her perspectives. So the question is, where do we want to travel?
Where's the first place you intend to go once you feel safe to go?
Oh, to a restaurant, I guess.
Good run.
Doesn't matter where, even downtown, I'll go. No, I just, you know, both my kids are over in Idaho. And I just really want to see them and have their lives be back to normal for their sake and also be able to spend some time with them. So that's my focus right now. Of course, you have the fantasy of, geez, if I could be in Europe right now, or if I could be someplace warm right now. But no, I'll just take Idaho for right now.
All right.
Other, I don't know, I don't know, again, walking into the meeting late, I'm not sure what folks have been saying. And just in terms of an update, you know, we did suspend jury trials again until March 1, and civil jury trials longer than that. So we're, you know, working with Dr. A with respect to that decision. And we're just kind of trying to deal, as I'm sure Prosecutor Toonheim would agree, trying to deal with what that means and the fallout that means, and trying to work with our partners and trying to do the best we can with a really, really bad poker hand. And I'm not sure there are any right answers, but, you know, we're working through it. Happy to answer questions, but it's just another day at the, at the really difficult office.
Questions for Judge Price?
Which restaurant?
You know, I'm pretty partial to, well, I should, I'm not going to pick favorites, not, not, not to me, any of them, particularly the ones that are struggling.
Oh, come on, Eric. What's your favorite?
I'm partial to places that brew their own beer, but maybe I've said too much.
Not at all. Not at all. Please tell.
I wanted to say to Judge Ammilo that I, I can, I really feel for what you must be feeling these, this particular couple of days. I, you know, of course, I was an attorney and I, when the district court position, I think that Commissioner Woolhouse came out. I printed the application and I had it half filled out. And I was imagining what it would be like to transition from a lawyer to a judicial officer. And I talked myself right out of it. Did not fill that application out. I just, for a variety of reasons, but, you know, I just, it's a different role. I mean, obviously, you're prepared for it, but just, I think what you were saying about how all the moving pieces work and the forms and how to fill everything out right. And I just got to be bewildering up there for first few days or weeks, or I don't know, Judge Price can tell us how long it takes to feel comfortable. But hang in there, and I know you're going to be great. So.
Thank you.
You know, I went to a judicial conference, won my first couple of months on the bench. And I was listening to these two gentlemen next to me, who probably were viewing me as some peach fuzz newbie that wasn't worth talking to. But they were talking to each other, two grizzled veterans, very, very wise in their, the way they looked. And I found out later, both have been on the bench 25 years or so. And one literally said to the other, I think I'm just finally getting it. And that was after 25 years. So when we got it, when I get it all figured, I'll let you know. In the meantime, it's true. No, nothing can prepare Judge Ammilo for her next few years, except to live through it. And we all had to do it. But she's doing great so far.
Okay, I think that covers our officials. I'm going to go to Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I've been thinking about where I'd like to go once it's safe to do so. And really, the thing that I want to do is go to a rock concert. And I don't care, I don't care what the band is. I don't care where they're playing. I'm just going to go listen and be a part of the crowd. The things that we're working on in budget and central services right now are all things that support all of you. And we continue to respond to the pandemic. We've already started looking forward to 2022 in the budget. I'll be putting out a calendar soon for the board's review. And then shortly after that, sharing the calendar for budget development for next year with all of you. But really, I'm just looking forward to this year and all of the things that we can do together as a county. Because we are a wonderful county. We have so many strengths. And all of the people on this call are important parts of that. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Anything for Robin? From the group? Okay. Okay, I'm going to go to County Manager, Mira Javits.
Thank you. I guess when it's safe to travel, love to go visit my youngest son, Michael. He lives in DC. And this past year, we missed major milestones that he has accomplished. So it's a little bit of, as a bittersweet, be part of his accomplishments at a distance. So that will be the first one. And a close second will be to go visit my mom down in South America. That will be, that will be a nice treat. I don't know if that will be this year, even with a vaccine. That might be a little more complicated without knowing how the vaccine will get down to South American countries. And speaking of which, the vaccine, that's probably what is in front of us. I have met with Shelley, Robin, Kurt, start developing some strategies as to how we're going to be reacting to the, the news the governor gave us, or at least the different faces this past Monday. So there's going to be a lot of work in front of us. We're going to bring from the board a couple of items. And those items will be to support vaccines. There is going to be, I just approved a newsletter. As you know, one of the elements of the governor was he wants to make sure that all the vaccines that have been allocated on a weekly basis are put in people's arms. So there's a lot of conversation related to that, to that event. We're organizing a vaccine event. They will start tomorrow. It will go through Friday in cooperation with St. Peter's Hospital. And a news release will be sending out, and there is going to be by appointment. And it will be based on the phases 1A and 1B, as the governor provided that direction. So the intent is to meet that requirement, to utilize all the vaccines. They have been allocated to the county in this case on a weekly basis. But also start looking as to how we're going to be moving forward when the mass vaccination will come our way. So there's a lot of opportunities in there. And as soon as we narrow down the plan, we'll make sure the board is aware of that. I think we can give him pieces of that plan a little bit. And we'll start gelling all the different elements to the vaccination process during this year. That's all I have for now.
Anybody got a question for Mira? Okay. Commissioner Mejia?
So a place that I would like to travel, I think I would actually finally like to celebrate my 30th. And I would do it by probably traveling down to Belize and go scuba diving or snorkeling, something fun like that. Let's see, I do not have any updates at this time. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards?
Well, I think I'm going to be kind of boring because I agree with Judge Price. I want to go to a restaurant. I have really missed traveling around this community, going to all the restaurants because that's been my history for many, many, many years. And so I guess that's, but if I was to leave the state, I've got a large family over in the Wyoming country. And I have got a young great grandson over there. And my bride of 51 years has been bugging me, you know, to get over there and see that young man. So I'm sure that'll probably be the first place we'll move. You know, to our new judge, I want to thank you for your past military service and continued military service and your, your family. I've had discussions with you on what you, your, your, your own children that are now serving in the United States Army. So I'm going to put on my Army hat because that's the one thing that I really have a soft spot for is our military and all the service that our military brings. And I'm a veteran myself. And Judge, I'm looking forward to your involvement with our veteran community. So thank you so much and welcome aboard.
Thank you. To that end, I joined the American Legion Post 94 in Lacey in the last four months. So I have my official hat and uniform.
All right. I guess that's, that leaves me. Robin made me think about the rock concert. I had in September, I think she knows this, but I had Roger Waters tickets at the Tacoma Dome from Pink Floyd. So that, hadn't seen him since 1987 when I was in high school. And I hope that concert gets rescheduled. But my wife is from Bulgaria, and we go to Bulgaria every three years to see her family. And that was supposed to happen last summer. So I'll certainly be going to Bulgaria as soon as we feel like that's the right, safe thing to do. And I don't really have much of an update. The, the schools issue has been a collision of, you know, work and home for me. My wife is a kindergarten teacher and I have two children in different levels of two different schools. So we've just been going around and around about what's the right thing to do. Luckily, the decision to reopen schools is not in the Board of County Commissioners' hands. Luckily, just because I wouldn't want that responsibility. It's been a real challenge for Dr. Abdal Malik and Shelley from our public health, working with our schools. We've had a lot of pressure from parents at Board of Health meetings. But there's just a lot of unknowns. And, you know, the teachers' unions are, you know, not, would like to see all of the staff and teachers vaccinated, but it doesn't look like that's going to happen before some of these schools are going to reopen to a hybrid model. My wife intends to go back. some of these schools are going to reopen to a hybrid model. My wife intends to go back in the classroom. But my kids, I think we've made the difficult decision not to send them into the classroom. But I don't know what that's going to mean because my wife's going to be teaching, you know, groups of kindergartners every day. So we're hoping for the best. We're hoping for good leadership on this vaccine rollout and, you know, the community just bears down for another you know, few months to get us through this. I'm really, really ready to be done with COVID nineteen, I can tell you that. So many things I think that are positive things that are on Thurston County's plate, kind of like Robin said, there's so many things I'm excited about and you know, the pandemic is just, at this point, it's just becoming it it really needs to be our primary focus so that we can just get beyond it. That's about all I've got. And got ten minutes? Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Some people may need to Google this reference, but I've always considered you sort of the buckaroo bonsai of commissioners. And, you know, you're an attorney, a commissioner, and you are a band member. So I I wondered, you released an album. Tell us about that. And when do we get to hear you live?
Yeah, well, my bluegrass group's The Old Mountain Boys. We did this and we actually recorded it before the pandemic. It was mostly recorded between Christmas and New Year's last year. And then it took the pandemic to get it. It took the spring and summer to get it mixed and artwork done and finally printed in September. So it's kind of hanging out there, but we don't usually promote it through shows and we have been able to play. So it's available, you know, you can get it, it's on Spotify, I think, oldymountboys.com and the CD is out there, but playing live, I don't know. I mean, right now the governor's restricted, we were, we were rehearsing all summer outdoors once we got to phase two. But now we can't even do that. And even if we move to phase two, under the roadmap to recovery, you're not allowed to have more than two households assembled. And there's four, a minimum of four of us, four different households. So even we cannot, until the weather warms up and we can stand outside and play, we can't even practice. So I don't know when we'll be playing music again. I really feel for well, you know, obviously the whole, there's lots of small businesses in economy, but I just really feel like for the musical performers and venue, things related to the entertainment industry, because they've just fallen through the cracks of all of this, a lot of this recovery money and, you know, extension of benefits and stuff, folks in the in the gig economy, as they say, just haven't qualified for a lot of it. And I'm, you know, I'm well connected to struggling acoustic musicians all through the Pacific Northwest and I know that they're just it's just venues are closing up, you know, we we very well may lose our number one music venue in Thurston County Rhythm and Ride downtown. They've been propped up by a couple of micro business loans, but the landlord has given them notice that once the moratorium is lifted or whatever, the rent's going to double. And they're, they're already looking for a new space. So I don't know what will happen to entertainment, you know, and stuff like that in Thurston County and across the.
Venues, it's just a generational loss, you know, the shoebox, so much pressure if there's no revenue to redevelop. Thank you for that, though.
Yeah, no, appreciate the question and can't wait to start playing music again. It's part of my mental health. All right, I guess that's that's it for this month. I appreciate everybody being here. It's great. Yeah, Gary.
So while everybody was talking, I had my admin look up the numbers on suicides that Romero had asked. In two thousand nineteen, we had fifty one. And then last year, even though we were on track to do eighty, we ended up with fifty one as well.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's.
And zero, zero so far for this year.
Given everything we've been through, that's, I guess, good news of a sense.
Commissioner, the County Treasurer just joined us. I don't know.
All right. Yeah, we got seven minutes left. Let's hear from Jeff. Jeff, you have to say where you want to travel once you're feel free to do so and then kind of report on what your team's doing.
Okay, so where I want to travel once I'm free to do so, probably Ireland. Yeah, it's a trip that we've been putting off, putting off, putting off. And I think those are some of the opportunities that really spotlight was shown on with this pandemic, when all of a sudden now you can't do it, right? So anyway, that's that. And I apologize for being late. The the Waco president this year has scheduled the executive board meetings to overlap with this meeting. So I do apologize for that. Highlights from the office, we're going to be mailing the tax bills on the tenth of next month. So they should get there before Valentine's Day. So your, your, your sweetheart day won't be ruined, shouldn't be, provided the mail is running on time. Taxes, toll taxes build, I don't know if Stephen talked about this, only went up about four and a half percent from last year. So it's a lot different than the nineteen percent increase that we went into twenty twenty with. Something I'd been meaning to talk about and, you know, got lost in the excitement of all the, all of the drama in the spring and I haven't had a chance to bring up, I go to the Thurston County Treasurer's website or the County Assessor's website because the two offices worked in partnership last year to put together a property tax tool where you can see both on a countywide and a property level basis the distribution of your property taxes with a three-year history. It's a pretty cool thing that Janine and Stephen's office and Steve in my office worked together on to put together and admitted they did crib some ideas from a couple of other counties, but it is a really cool tool and I really encourage you to go look at it.
Thanks, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff before we break?
I just say I would never mention taxes. I don't know anything about taxes, only value and equity.
Yeah, that that used to be my line when I would go out in the field. I don't know anything about taxes. Call the treasurer.
Okay, thanks, everybody. We'll see you next month.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everyone. Have a great rest of the day.